All right, good morning, everybody. It is 8:30 and we will call the meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Am I confusing you a little bit, Mike?
I forgot.
All on the same page. All right. Item number three is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. Any requested action items must be scheduled for a future meeting date. Is there anybody that would like to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed? Seeing nobody in the audience, we will move to item number four, which is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions and/or subtractions to the agenda?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda today?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number five is the reorganization of the board. And letter A is the election of a chairperson for 2020. Do I have somebody that would like to appoint?
I'd like to make motion, Mike Bartley be chairman for the year of 2020.
Second. All right, I got a motion by Jensen, second by Borzma, to appoint Michael Bartley as chairperson for 2020. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Take it away.
Oh, now it's my turn.
Now it's your turn.
Okay. Back to the agenda. Item B is election of a vice chairman for, vice chairperson for 2020. Is there a motion to appoint?
I would move to appoint Commissioner Larry Jensen as vice president, vice chair.
Motion done as second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Congratulations, Larry. You and I are going to do this for another year.
(Inaudible).
There we go. Item six is the consent agenda items. We have approval of the minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of the human services report. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made as second. Any comments? Hearing no comments, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item seven is approval of claims. We have two PDFs. We have an additional one that was added this morning, the self-honed reimbursements for January. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made as second. Any comments or questions? Commissioner Pierce.
Stacy, can you tell us the $69,000 for Tyler Technologies? What program is that for?
That is for our in-code program, I believe. That is our software that runs everything for the county essentially, and that's our annual agreement, maintenance agreement with them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is department head reports. Brian, we'll start with the highway department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a few things here as far as our snow removal's been going. One of the things I wanted to update the commission on was a couple of pieces of equipment that we had go down. We had a motor grader, the transmission failed in the motor grader. It was taken to Sioux Falls last week. They currently have the transmission out, unsure what the cost is going to be to repair that yet, so as that comes in, I will update you guys on that. In the meantime, we do have a loner, and then if you guys remember too, we kept a cat motor grader. We've been having some electrical issues with another one that's stationed in white, but we're going to see if we can't get that figured out now that we've got a little buying time here with the weather. It sounds like it's supposed to get cold, but we're not looking at much as far as moisture goes. And also, we had a truck that went to Sioux Falls this morning that needed some exhaust work with the new emissions. The way that truck was set up, we're looking into to see if we can't get some monetary assistance from Detroit on this, but it's the emissions filter stuff, and we're looking at right around a $15,000 fix on that. And just a guesstimate on that motor grader, we're probably looking at $30,000 for fixing that transmission, so just a couple of things I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of as we see those bills come in. Aside from that, we're going to be looking at bidding our asphalt here next week for our 2020 overlay projects, and I don't have too much else.
Okay. Any questions? You get off early today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marty, Sheriff's Report, please.
Morning.
Good morning.
I put a couple sheets on your desk, statistics for the, since January 1st, and then there's the end of the year one that you can look at, but that's only partial of what, I'll do another end of the year to show revenue and some of the other things that the sheriff's office do. What's on this is just part of my office. We have a lot of other functions, and we do show, I'll show revenue and so forth that's coming in. It's still not enough to make the place run by itself, but at least we do have some revenue coming in. Anyway, I want to just, Dan, state's attorney, had a good article with the vaping, and when, I just want to, and as you know, when his office is busy, my office is busy, so with the increase of felonies, that increases my inmate population too, and that affects budget and so forth too, so, but I thought that was a good job, so anyway. At the present time, I have 39 inmates. I have one still at Fulton that we're going to bring back today. Since I do have a little room, there's no use to keep one in Fulton, so I'll bring him back. We had four up there, but I'll bring him back, and hopefully the beginning of the year will start out like the beginning of the year last year when we were only running in the high 30s and not the 40s per day. Also, just briefly on the snow, we lucked out as far as snow, as far as accidents. We just had non-injury accidents, but lots of slight ins, a lot of people overdriving road conditions. We can't get them to slow down. I told my deputies to write tickets. I think the only way you get the word out is to write them tickets. I know it's misery to get stuck, and, but it's all about overdriving, so I just need to slow down so it doesn't happen like in Watertown with the tow truck driver that got killed there, so. Also, Judge Abigail Howard came into my office last week. She talked about that the judges are looking at wanting to screen the courthouse, screening everybody that comes in, and Connington County just went full-time to screening, Brown County just went full-time to screening, and so I will get with and meet with the judges when Judge Howard gets back. She's in Rochester right now with her son, and then we'll have a meeting and see what their expectations are of my office, but this is, would be a budget increase because we'd have to man that. I think some of the hours I could probably use part-time correction officers to screen, but there's a lot, there's going to be a lot, not, I shouldn't say a lot to this, but there's going to be a lot of considerations. The proper way to do that probably is to close some entrances, and they only come in one entrance to screen before they go up to the elevator, and it'll be a lot easier. You know, when I first became sheriff, I did do some screening upstairs, but we only did it on magistrate court, only in the morning, then you had afternoon court, then you had Tuesday court, Wednesday court. We only screened part of the time and only part of the building, and it didn't work well because there were other offices there, you know, you had equalization, and you came and got your license plates from the treasurer's office, and so we couldn't really do it without interfering with a lot of customer coming in. Where now with the courthouse, the only people that come into the courthouse has something to do with the courts. They're either going to probation, or they're going to the clerk of courts, or they got courts, so it would be a lot easier to have one entrance and probably do it, but as I visit with the judges and get what their expectations of my office is for the screening, but that's what they would like to go to is screening of everybody that comes into the courthouse, so.
And they'd be looking at screening 40 hours a week, then?
Probably. Yeah, if they want, as long as the courthouse is open. Again, I won't know everything until I visit with them, you know, it might be that they, maybe it's just court days. I don't know.
So, don't we have a committee that you sit on, Stacy, and Jenny sits on, and on courthouse issues?
It doesn't meet anymore.
What happened with that? I guess I didn't know that.
I've been trying. I haven't had time. Jenny and I have talked about getting it going again. I don't know, just, I think just schedules and people weren't able to meet, and so, you know, after you miss a couple meetings, then it sort of fell to the wayside, so.
And I think that's what we'll do now, is have a full-blown meeting with Stacy and get our courthouse committee back again, you know, and that way Stacy's there to hear what the judges say and stuff, so.
And I just think it would be important for the commission to have a representative on that, since that's our building, we're responsible for it, so.
And we do have a screening device in the basement that we can use. It's got some years on it, but I did do a security grant, courthouse grant, which I did apply for because our ITV machine needs to be, our television needs to be updated, because there is talk that they would like to use that more. One judge would like to use that more, too, and I know you're familiar with that because that's what you did in Watertown every magistrate court date, you know, so, but with the expansion, once that expansion goes, I'll have some room more to do that than I can do now and how to do it, so that's something in the future that we'll, but I want to get that machine up going, so they do want to use it more. And then I did apply for some more handwands, to hand-wand individuals and so forth, so. But as this, as we have our meeting, I'll fill you in more on what their expectations are from my office.
And just with other, you know, with the expansion project and everything, it's important when a decision's made to shut some of those doors, that everybody's looking at the parking issues and how that flow's going to work on heavy traffic days, because if you're shutting the door that's closest to the parking lot, which I don't think is probably going to be the one that gets shut, but the parking is going to be an issue when that happens.
And the only thing is that I, you know, they're probably, you know, if we do some, well, I won't know until, we need to talk about it, so I don't want to jump to.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay. The other thing is, is that, and I sent it, we sent a bill to SDSU for overtime for officers that worked the tailgating games and so forth, and that check usually don't come in until the new year, so that's a little over $12,000, so I charge the, we charge $55 an hour, the city police, the highway patrol, we all charge the same, so we make a little bit, a little bit on that, too, so at least we, most of the time we try to break even or whatever, but we do make a little bit on that, so, but that check will be coming shortly. Also, there's a, there was a grant for, from Avira Health on AEDs, and so I was able to secure eight more AEDs, and that will go into all the patrol cars, all the active patrol cars have AEDs in them now. A couple years ago, we upgraded those, but now the detective car, the transport cars, the civil process car, my car, and the assistant sheriff's car will all have AEDs in them, so that will, every car will have an AED, so that was nice from Avira, that was a state grant, so. The other thing is that the 24/7 program, you know, we're up some participants there from, I think, 156 to 164, so we're up eight there, have 55 come in on PBTs, so that's 110 that come in twice a day. We did do some changing on how we run the 24/7 program. We're doing it similar to other counties are doing, is that they got a three-way window now, so it's from 6:00 to 9:00 in the morning they can blow, and then 6:00 at 9:00 at night they can blow, instead of the exact 12:00 to 12:00. That helps a strain on the jail coming in and so forth, too, so so far that's working, working okay. Other than that, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Marty? Thank you, Sheriff.
Yep.
We'll move on to Vicki's report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have our tax notices at Qualified, and they are being worked on, and they will be sent out as soon as they get time down in Sioux Falls, so you should receive your tax notices, I would think, next week. And we're just trying to get end-of-the-year things done in our office. We're on accrual basis, which means that we have to put revenue and expenses back, anything that occurred in 2019, so we won't be able to close our books out for 2019 till the end of January. And then we'll be starting the annual report that has to be done by March 1st, but we can't get that started until we can close out the year, so that is what we're working on in our office. Any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Pierce.
Not so much a question as, I wanted to thank Vicki. I sit on two groups that have been asking questions about real estate taxes. One's Public Affairs and the other one's Leaders Roundtable, but Vicki put together, and she gave it to me this morning, she's going to send a copy to Stacy, and this explains, and I think we could get some PR out for the county on how real estate tax information is, and what she did is she figured the value on a $200,000 house in Brookings, one on a $200,000 piece of commercial property, one on a $200,000 piece of ag property, and then did Volga also, and it is interesting for people that sometimes say, you know, what's the county doing, why are our taxes so high? When you look at this, you're able to see exactly where the money goes, and I think this is something that if you want to share with people would be really helpful, and I appreciate you doing that work. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll get that to Stacy so she can get it over to you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Bob? Had to have you sit back down, Mike.
Did you mean me or?
I meant you.
Good morning. On, at the last, December 31st, at the last meeting, we had a functional exercise at the ULC. I had to leave a little early for that. That actually went rather well. They substituted actual patients for pieces of paper of names on them, and if they was wheelchair-bound, they actually had a wheelchair taken out to a beta bus and actually moved to the relocation site. It was a functional exercise instead of a true tabletop and performed quite well, and we're going to take the results of this particular exercise and keep moving on. Monday, yesterday, the NACO High Performance Leadership Academy kicked off. The, I participated in a trial at the courthouse yesterday, they actually let me out. This week FEMA is at Lowell's giving tips on mitigation. This is part of our FEMA declaration from the September rainfall. They'll be there all week and until 5:00 on Saturday, I believe, and if any citizen of Brookings County or a local area has any questions on construction and things like that, you know, we've got our local building codes. FEMA's not going to sit there and tell you to do anything that's not within, the first thing out of FEMA's mouth when you ask them about reconstruction is talk to your local building code people, and that's the proper way to do it, but they're there to explain what mitigation factors can be done for, like helping embassments and stuff like that. The generic stuff is what FEMA's there to give advice on, and they're work of homeowners or contractors, either one. We got a zoning meeting tonight, starts at 6:30. It's a joint jurisdiction ordinance review for the first part of the meeting, a joint meeting with the City of Brookings Planning Commission, and then about 7:30 plus or minus, we will start our regular, regular planning meeting. Thursday, we got a PPCC pod meeting over at the hospital. They've just released the Homeland Security Grant paperwork. It, the application ends on February 14th. I'll work with the other offices, typically the sheriff's office and possibly the IT people to see what they would like to apply for grants for, and the big thing to remember about these particular Homeland Security Grants, our region, emergency management region, gets one lump of sum, and then we have to divide it between 10 different counties, and we got 10 different emergency managers sitting in a meeting trying to duke out who, over who gets what funding. So you got the big counties with the big populations versus the small counties with hardly any population, so just because we apply for these particular grants don't mean we will get them, but we'll do our best to see what we can do to get them. Radio issues, we've actually had a radio issue pop up from our two new repeaters. There was a major bleed over from Minnesota, one of the fire departments in Minnesota, it was making it, so the fire department helped, and they basically stopped using and had to go to cell phones for texting, so Sioux Falls ready to solutions, the old Sioux Falls two-way, they're up. They started coming back into Brookings yesterday, Brookings County, and they're doing some stuff to the repeaters, and then they've got to go around to all the fire departments that I paid to have their radios programmed and reprogram their radios again, this time to no cost to us, because this is not our issue, this is their problem. So right now, if you're getting any feedback from the fire department, some of it may be negative, but we're working on it. We got Sioux Falls solution in the county, trying to get the radios back where they're supposed to go. Apparently the fire department in Minnesota's got the real close frequency to whatever the, at least the white repeater was, so that's being worked on. Individual assistance information, last meeting I passed out some paperwork on the individual assistance. Since that time, we've had two, four, six, six more applicants, $43,000 more dollars, so right now we've got $460,341 of FEMA money injected into the county due to the September storms, that's for individual assistance, and FEMA grant reimbursement is ongoing. I just signed the paperwork and shipped it off to Pier yesterday, and I made sure that the finance office has a copy of all paperwork that I do dealing with these Homeland Security and FEMA grants. Any questions?
Any questions for Bob?
Thank you.
Saying none. Mike, we're going to have you next, so you can come up now. And Kristen, you'll be after Mike.
Well, we're trying to get to that nine o'clock hour for Todd. First, I'd like to thank you guys for appointing me into position as the county veteran service officer. It's a job I truly love, and I greatly appreciate you allowing me to do it again. The next thing is, one of the tasks that you'd given me last week was dealing with the veteran cemetery and the request for funding, and I don't know how much you've been able to go through. When it was passed, they said that they needed to have a $3 million endowment, which they would use a percentage of that each year of the interest earned or the earnings on it to provide the perpetual care for the facility, and that's what this is about. The endowment deadline is actually July of 2023, and they are, they had about a third, a little better than a third of the way into it, oh no, I take that back, about six of the way into it, in the next couple of years, and so they did put out a fundraiser letter to the counties to get some more money. I have heard that they did get another grant from an individual that they're working out the particulars on to help it get to about the halfway point. Looking at it, I know that our, you know, my budget doesn't have anything in it for this year, but what I might look at would be putting in for next year's budget, since it's still under that small amount, or, you know, a fair amount, let's put that away, to put into it, but I would like to talk with you all offline, I guess, or individually, whatever, and just to get your input, what you think of it.
My personal thoughts is I certainly would support us making some sort of donation. The dollar amount, I think you need to get some research on what other counties are stepping up and doing a similar size to us, and then bring that information to us, so we've got some sort of guideline.
Right, and that's what I would do. I would, I would try to find out a little bit about what others are doing and stuff, and see what each of you individually think about it, and then probably bring it to all of you and see if it's a general consensus, but.
I'm not sure that that should be in your budget, though.
It may not have to be in your budget. We'll discuss that.
Okay, but I'll do some more research, find out what other counties are doing, but we do have, like I say, until 2023 to do it, so it's not like we have to make a decision in the near future.
Any other questions? Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you, Mike. Kristen? BCOIC report? Morning.
So, this morning, we have the Veterans Affairs Police qualifying in the range. They will be there today, and they will be there also on the 9th, so apologize, but wanted to make sure everybody was getting off to a great start there. Also, on Thursday, if you guys are able to attend the city council meeting, one of our RSOs is actually being nominated or, sorry, receiving the Volunteer of the Month Award, and that is David Clark. So if you guys are able to attend, I will be there as well, but he is actually receiving that award. Couple other things real quick. We are going to remove a tree right at the beginning of the building. It actually is kind of dying anyway, it's an evergreen tree, but it's actually interfering with our cameras, so we're not able to see all the way out to the back as it's grown up. It's starting to interfere, and that camera has actually assisted the police department several times in catching people doing some illegal activity out in the back of the softball field, as well as some illegal activity now right around that shelter belt for us. So by removing that tree, we'll have a better streamlined view of everything. Small tree, we can replace it with a brush or a shrub in the spring, but if we cut it down now, then we'll be able to continue seeing everything that's going on out there. Shooting sports started this weekend. As far as I've heard from the coaches, everything has gone really well. We've added a couple more carts for everything, but talking with the individual coaches, they really said things went well. We added some more tables in there to kind of ease the kids and being able to put their equipment, so didn't have a chance to talk to Sonia yesterday, she and I both were pretty busy, but the coaches I spoke to said everything was fantastic. Leagues for us start on the 27th, we already have 12 signed up and actually more coming in. We're finalizing the last list of the range safety officers and who made the Class A status, as well as we finalized the new, actually continuation of the Jack Rabbit sponsorship contract, and in turn, Leo's going to hear something new that wasn't broadcasted yet till today, but we were granted a hospitality suite for one of the Jack Rabbit games, and we're using that as a volunteer appreciation night. So that'll be February 14th, that'll be up at SDSU. They're providing all food, drink, everything for us, and it holds up to 45 people, and they're providing that to us free of charge for our continued sponsorship. We've had a lot of individuals come in by membership saying, hey, we saw you guys on, you know, whether it's the basketball games, or wrestling mat, or the football games, and, you know, we're excited to do the facilities here, and then in turn, either day passes or memberships. So that's been a really good outsourced or resource for us. New ads are coming from Midco. We are looking at potential training for RSOs for the AED units, as well as CPR training, and then as well, I wanted to let you guys know that we do have our vests and our sweatshirts available for sale, if anyone would like to wrap some BCOIC gear. And then Friday, I attended Darren's retirement party, which was fantastic, and then I will be gone the 16th and 17th of January. My sister and I didn't get to do Christmas together, so I'm going to Florida for a couple of days, so I will think of you guys if it's negative 20 outside. Probably not, but you can think I will. And then also with the 29th, I will be attending an event for Leadership Brookings, but not on behalf of the BCOIC, but I will be gone that day as well. Everything is covered, but just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of it. Any questions?
Any questions? Saying none. Thank you very much. Todd, we're one minute early for you. We'll take you. Todd Case, First District.
Good morning and happy new year to everyone. Well, I see many of you on a fairly frequent basis throughout the course of the year. I always enjoy the opportunity to come and address all of the county commissions in the Planning District to talk about activities and going on district-wide, and also things that... and also things that are pertinent to your own specific county. Do I just hit my own button, or do I tell you to do it? All right, well, for the public's sake, this little background, brief information on the First Planning District, we're one of six regional planning development districts across the state of South Dakota. We have six, we have sister organizations in Aberdeen, Sioux Falls, Yankton, Pier and Rapid City. We are that little blue slice of pie up there in the Northeast, next slide, please. We've been around since 1971. We're not government, but we're creatures of government. We created through executive order back in 1971 by then-Governor Frank Farrar. And we operate under a joint powers agreement with 11 counties and 76 communities in northeastern and South Dakota. We are basically there to provide technical services which promote and support community and economic development services across our specific district. Next slide, please. As far as how we are governed, each county has three representatives on our board. And we have two Chairman of the Flandre-Santis Sioux and Sishten-Wapenuyate, so we have a 35-member board. They meet generally on a quarterly basis. Their role is to provide general guidance to the director, approve the work plan for the year, to approve the budget for the year, and just allow me to bounce ideas off of. We have a very strong commitment from Brookings County. Mike Bartley, Fred Weeks and Steph Miller, Stephanie Miller are your representatives on our board. And I truly appreciate their guidance and leadership in that regard. Next slide, please. As far as how we're funded, we have three general streams of income that come into our office. Every county and all municipalities with a population over 100 pays dues into our organization. And currently, that represents about 22% of our operating revenues. We use some of those dollars and dues to match other state and federal grants and do state and federal contract work, which is another 27%. And then the rest of it is all fee-for-service work. And that fee-for-service work is provided to our membership at rates much less than you would find with the private sector, just due to the power of the collective. And that's really one of the power engines that we have by working together as a region. Next, please. I'm very privileged to work with a very seasoned staff. I've been with the district, it'll be 27 years this May. I never thought that was going to happen in 1993, but still here. Again, very seasoned staff, we've got some new people. There's one that says 00 up there, that's Peyton Schaefer. She's a recent graduate of South Dakota State University, landscape architecture. And I continue to be the lone red guy in the office, so. But I hire a lot of state people because I do good work. Next slide, please. As far as what we do, most of you are aware, we write a lot of applications, a lot of grant applications, a lot of loan applications for community development projects, economic development projects. If those projects are funded, then we turn around and help out with the Red Tape Administration, dotting i's, crossing t's, doing environmental reviews, making sure Davis-Bacon Wage Compliance is in place. All those things that come with the quote "free" money. Planning and research, it's in the title of who we are. Basically, if it has any sort of research background, plan, book report, study, we've done one of those probably over the course of the years. It's what I cut my teeth on for the first, you know, 12, 15 years of my professional life here. We also do a lot of different types of technical support, specifically in areas of geographic information systems, tax increment financing districts. And then we also have a sister organization, the First District Development Company. And they are a small business administration certified development company which manages also a large portfolio of loan programs that we have within our office that we offer to new and expanding businesses throughout the district and as well as across the state. And then we're out there schlepping the state programs, making sure that all of the communities and counties are aware of opportunities that are out there for them. Next slide, please. I always say, we do a lot of things that really have a hard time showing a return on investment for us. We always just basically look at new job creation, population growth throughout the district, but it's always coming about showing, showing you the money. And so last year, across the district, we received about $275,000 in dues from our membership. We were able to assist our membership in obtaining over $9 million in grants and loans. Of that 9,507 was just in direct grants. So bet roughly about a $21 return on investment over in 2019. Since I've been the director in fiscal year 2008, we've been running about $25 a year, over 70, almost $71 million in direct grants to the memberships. Again, that's not something that where we have the money in the closet or under the bed. We just kind of know where the closet and the bed is, and we just try to get the people there to enact as the conduit between the funders and the applicants. And it's really indicative of the strength of our region, showing the reinvestment into our communities and our counties. And so we're really glad to participate in that role. Next slide. Regarding Brookings, in 2019, Brookings County, there was $4.2 million in grants and forgiveness. So if you go back to that 5.7 million, a lot of that money, most of it came into Brookings County last year. And a lot of that was based upon some projects I'll talk about here in just a minute. But basically, so you see in fiscal year 2019, there was a $71 return on dues paid collectively through the members of the district of, in Brookings County. Our average return just over the last, since I've been director, has been about $25 a year. Next slide, please. And then we did do one loan in Brookings County, working with a private business here. It was a $241,000 loan on a total project cost of $664,000. Do we have the white sheet as well? Yeah, okay. So specifically about some of the projects that we've been working on in Brookings County specifically, we manage a couple statewide GIS databases which can be utilized by the county. We operate the One Call data set. So when you make your phone call to say, I'm going to be digging in my backyard, we manage that database for the 811 call center that's based in Texas. We also maintain 27 counties' data sets across the state for all the Department of Transportation information. So all the DOT data that goes with every road in Brookings County is things that we manage, and we'll be sending out letters to all the townships and communities here in the next few weeks just to update that information, and then we go out and collect new roads and those types of things. Luke Muller in my office spends a lot of time in Brookings County, either working with the Brookings County on updating their zoning regulations, attending planning and zoning meetings. And I know he's been shepherding the Joint Jurisdiction Review Committee for the last, it's going to be a six-month project, but it's been about two years so far. And now it's taking the next step and going to the Planning Commission. So we probably will see him again for probably another six months or so on that aspect as well. We've also, just in the last year, completed a couple important plans. That's also related to Bob Hill's office. In 2018, we assisted the county receiving a grant to do a pre-disaster mitigation plan. And that pre-disaster mitigation plan was just recently approved by FEMA, which now makes all of the county and communities eligible to apply for hazard mitigation grants over the next five years. And we also did a hazardous materials plan grant back in 18, and that plan was completed in 2019, which assists Bob on emergency response information for places that have hazardous materials on site. City of Brookings, as I mentioned, we've been helping with the Joint Jurisdiction. We're doing an environmental review on an ICAP self-help program in Brookings that's going to be coming forth this year. It says funding is pending on an $850,000 application for a stormwater project that was just released on Friday, was the governor announced that that project is being funded. I visited Elkton last night, been there once a month since last May, working on a new zoning ordinance and a strategic plan for the community there in Elkton. Also, there's a huge amount of dollars that Elkton's doing a water and sewer project there. They received a $2 million consolidated water facility plan grant, a 794,000 SRF grant, and a $1.2 million loan, and another $2 million loan with 1.1 million forgiveness. So that $4 million, all of that went into Elkton primarily over the course of the year. So good project. Doing a lot of work in Volga here this year as well. Assisted them in an industrial access grant for $239,000. We just recently submitted a couple state revolving loan fund grant applications. We expect those to have some funding, grant dollars coming back into Volga probably in March or April of this year. As far as some of the miscellaneous, we're out there assisting all the communities with zoning administration, technical assistance. We did receive a district-wide grant of $70,000 last year, with which I just broke out the Brookings County share of 1/11 of that grant. We used Brookings County dues and all the other counties dues to match that $70,000 grant on a one-to-one through the Economic Development Administration. And then I just, another note on that, partnered with a local lender, there's a typo, it's 241,000, not 241,000, 0005. So very briefly, very fast, that's kind of the things that have been going on in Brookings County. District-wide, a lot of activity, some counties and some communities more than others. But that's just the way things ebb and flow across the district. We have a new home, probably the big news in my life with the Planning District. After 35-odd years living at First Avenue North in Watertown, we've constructed our own facility, it's on the north end of Watertown. We'll be looking at having a open house later this spring. But if you're in Watertown, you get up north, Highway 81, north of the Cowboy, right up by the ASCS office, we have a new dark charcoal gray building. And I have a window, which I've never had in 26 and a half years, so we're pretty excited. People are pretty happy. And that is what I have for you today, any questions or comments?
Any questions or comments? We're going to put a shade in that room so you feel better, we'll just close it.
Oh, yeah, I just, it's always dark, no.
We don't want you daydreaming, looking out the window, Todd.
I'm a big-picture guy, now I find myself really, no, I don't.
Find yourself staring out the window looking at the weather. It is a beautiful office, and it was a move that the board made in the last year here. Todd presented a very good presentation on why we should own our own building versus leasing one that doesn't have a bathroom that works half the year last year, or some water that didn't work. It is appropriate, this facility allows for some expansion, some rooms, some workspaces that are more appropriate for the staff than what we've had before. And financially, it made a lot of sense for the district to do that. So I appreciate the efforts that you put into that, and the board appreciated the efforts that we put into that.
Thank you.
If you ever get up to Watertown stops here, it's pretty nice. Other questions?
You know, they break out that group of 11, 11 counties that we have there. Is there any talk of consolidating or changing the makeup of that or adding to? Are any of these planning districts struggling to get funds and stuff like that?
Over the course of the years, that's a good question, Ryan. Roberts County never used to be a part of the Planning District, it used to be part of NICOG. Roberts County in 2000 felt like they weren't receiving adequate services. It's not knocking NICOG, but we were doing things in GIS and direct community planning that wasn't being done in NICOG, and so they left, they joined us. It took, the governor has to approve it, the Economic Development Administration also has to approve that in Denver. We get requests periodically from neighboring counties on the periphery of the district that, you know, they see what we do, they like what we do, they hear good things, and we talk. And we don't go out and poach projects, we kind of, or poach communities or counties. We've got a gentleman's agreement amongst the other directors that, you know, if somebody wants something in McCook County that CECOG's not providing, you know, we'll help out and do that. But I've had, just in the last year, probably three counties, I'll remain nameless, you know, have inquired about joining, and I've laid out the process. And when they find out the process is somewhat detailed and long, and it might take six months to a year, then they, they say, I will just weather it out. But it can happen. And I just hear now, just as far as, it's kind of like, you know, counties, you know, you hear four townships are thinking about starting their own county now in Yankton County, so. It's kind of a detailed deal.
All righty.
But we appreciate the support that Brookings County has given us. Brookings and Cottington County are the principal providers of dues into our organization based on population, and we hope that you find benefit in what we do. A lot of the monies that are generated in Brookings County, we try to do a lot of that work in the smaller communities that don't have the ability to have the full-time technical staff available to them. And that's been the approach of Brookings County, is that it's been a good investment for the small towns because we all sink or swim together. Thank you very much.
If not, thank you, Todd, you're perfectly on time. Our next agenda item B at 9:15 is Rolling Thunder, a discussion on possible action on a request to place a bench on the courthouse grounds. We'll have discussion first, gentlemen would like to come up, identify yourselves? If Mike's going to help you, we'll have to add another chair, I guess.
Good morning, I'm Bob Foster, I'm the chairman of the board for our local Rolling Thunder chapter in Brookings here, and I have Leo Sterling with me this morning, he's a past president. Just a little bit, Rolling Thunder is a national organization with about 90 chapters across the United States. Chapter two here, we are one of two in the state of South Dakota. Our primary mission is to promote and educate the public that our government has left POWs and prisoners of war missing in action unaccounted for from all the wars and conflicts. And that, and one of the ways we are doing that is these benches, we've got nine of them we've placed. We started a chapter here in 2010. We've placed nine of these benches so far across the region, Asteline, Arlington, De Smet, Millbank, Volga, Bruce, Aurora. And we're looking at proposed benches this year for Hot Springs Veterans Home in Brookings here. We were approached that they are interested in doing some kind of touching up at the memorial over here at the courthouse. And we were asked if we'd be interested in being part of that, part of that, and indeed, we are, and so forth. Like I say, we're about letting people know there's still people out there unaccounted for. Across the United States, there's over 84,000. In South Dakota, there's 357, seven of those which are Vietnam era, 35, Korea, and the rest are World War II. We just, they just identified a Brookings County resident this past year, Donald Morgan from Elkton. And, or Megan, excuse, Megan, excuse me, and stuff, so. Like I say, we purchased the bench, we've been placing them. Some places have concrete where our setter has set them right on the concrete. At Flandre, their courthouse there, they did not have concrete where they wanted it set, so our setter actually dug in a concrete pad. It's Roush Brothers Monument that does the work for us. They actually dig in a pad, it's a four-inch pad, they level it, get it set really good, and then they epoxy the bench to that concrete pad. I think the dimensions and everything are on there, if you have any questions. I guess, Mike, you kind of have some different ideas as far as the placement of the bench?
And I have, I would need input because I'm not, I don't visualize things right. And anyway, this is a current, the memorial that's over there, as you can see, there are still four pads there that are open for, you know, Iraqi freedom, enduring freedom, and some of the issues that we're dealing with right now without the wars being officially ended, those spots there. I took a picture just to give you in reference of where it's at. Now, from this point, on the left side, you know, we could put a bench over there, there is concrete walking straight up to it, which would be the walkway. One of the ideas, one of my ideas was to put the bench on its separate pad to either the right or left, either towards courthouse or away. And if you, I did not take a picture of it, but 180 degrees from this is where the flagpole is, and there is a concrete walkway there that would also probably be a very good spot to put the bench also in. And with it being, I guess, with the flagpole side of it, you could either look straight at this memorial and look at the flagpole, whichever you would, if the bench was on that spot. So I would need input from someone, you know, or they would need input as to where we would like the bench. But I fully support the idea of having the bench there, and it is, they're very shiny benches. I think you've probably seen them at the different places. If you haven't, I really suggest that you would look at them. And I think it'd be a great addition to this memorial.
Yeah, they're made out of polished black granite. They're a very durable bench.
Any questions from the commissioners? Any suggestions on placement?
Is our flag, is that right on the corner of the sidewalk? Where's the flag?
It's a T, it's, when you, it's halfway between the street and the courthouse on the north side of the walkway. And it's fairly distance out from it.
Yes, it's a ways off the main sidewalk, yeah, yep.
Yes, it's a ways off the main sidewalk, yeah. Yep.
I guess I would recommend that we approve the bench, but use an aerial photo to identify the exact location at a future meeting, or else we discuss that in a, in a future.
Would this be something that this courthouse committee that's gonna reconstitute itself could make that decision? Would we be comfortable with that?
I would, the only concern that I have on the placement is taking into consideration mowing. That's, that'll be important.
Yeah, we would look at mowing. Snow removal really isn't an issue at these locations, but we would take into account mowing, and then the sprinkler, underground sprinkler system that we have in place too, that would need to be located before we would do anything. But if the Board is comfortable, I can, I can work with Mike, and we can come up with location and get it placed.
And again, if you need comments from the courthouse committee that you're gonna put back together, you could advise, ask them. I don't think it needs to come back to us if they come through it. Okay, everybody's comfortable with that. Alright, at this point, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made in second. Any additional comments? Hearing none. On this one here, I think we'll call the roll.
Grogman.
Hi.
Jensen.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Boersma.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Unanimous for you, thank you.
Thank you for helping us get the word out and everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to item nine, regular business. Item A is an action to approve Resolution Number 20-01, a resolution setting meeting pay and per diem rates for volunteer county boards for 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments? Any report?
These dollar amounts were reviewed by the respective department heads that oversee those boards, and there was no change in the dollar amount from last year.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Jensen.
Hi.
Pierce.
Boersma.
Hi.
Grogman.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item B is an action to approve Resolution Number 20-02, a resolution setting the pay for election workers in 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments?
I just wanna ask this question.
You may.
Are we getting enough people to be election workers? Are we paying enough money? Because we're not paying very much, and I just wanna know if our wage is set at a rate where we're going to be able to get enough people to do the job.
I, having visited with Kristen about this, I think she would like to see this increased. It wasn't in the budget for 2020, the increase was not budgeted for. Other counties are paying for election school attendance, they're paying as much as $50, I think, just for that, I, but even the hourly rate.
I think it is important, if not this year, next year, to increase that, but I do feel like it's important to get it increased. They go through a lot of work, right?
Yes, they do.
They go through a lot of work for what they get paid.
And other counties too, I know Kristen had mentioned that some counties just play, pay a flat rate. It's not based per hour, it's just a flat rate of, I can't remember what the dollar amount was that she said, but it averages between 13 to a 15-hour day for those folks that are working out there.
I think, given that it's a federal election this year, we should probably consider making sure that we address it this year, so we have adequate support for this year's election.
Isn't, I mean, our part-time, if we're hired in the county, our part-time is close to $15, isn't it?
For some positions, yeah. So, we also have temporary election workers that work in the office with Kristen, that help with the absentee early voting. We sort of base their hourly rate off of what the precinct superintendent is, we always have done that, so that is, right now, at 12:50 as well. But yes, our starting wage for a part-time person is 15-plus, in other, in other positions.
Is there any way to tie it to that, and then?
I think that would be a great idea.
Tie it to your part-time, you know, cost, because it's considered part-time, obviously, they're here for a short period of time.
And then it would go up as we increase that part-time.
And we really don't treat these particular people that this resolution references as part-time staff. I mean, they're paid, because it's, you know, two days of the year, so we're kind of talking about two different things here. One, this resolution speaks to the workers that are out there on Election Day at the vote centers, working from approximately 6 o'clock in the morning until 7, 8 o'clock at night, or later. Then we have our temporary election workers that we do hire, that we treat as part-time seasonal staff. Their hourly rate has always been tied to this resolution. Not that it has to be, it just always has been. Those folks work for those six weeks leading up to the election, in the office downstairs, with Kristen, and with Jenna, and help with the early voting, they go help with setup, they just all help with election prep. So, we're kind of talking about two different things. If you want to address the resolution first for the election workers, and then maybe give us some direction on how you would like to tie that to those temporary seasonal workers.
You said they're tied, but how are they tied? Are they the same?
They're the same. The superintendent rate is the same rate of pay. That's typically what we've done.
Are these, are these subject to payroll taxes?
We do, we don't, we don't, we just pay them the flat rate.
Do we provide a 1099 at the end of the year for these?
No.
No, they, they have never met the...
It's exempt, yeah.
Right. They've never met that payment threshold.
To the, to the request to make a change now, for this year, any idea what our election workers' total cost is last year, and if we raised it to 15, what the effect would be, total dollar amount, do you have any idea?
I do not have that.
No, I haven't done that. I want...
You know, we can sure get it for you, but I do not have it with me.
How many election workers do you know that we hire?
We hire close to 100, except, between, right over 70, between 70, 75.
Yeah, I was gonna say, between 70, 75.
Yeah.
And they work about 15 hours that day?
I see a calculator going over here, so.
And plus the meeting pay, the election school.
Election meeting pay.
And I do think that has to be increased, too.
Where's that at? Is that here in town?
Yes.
$1,500?
Yeah.
I mean, I think we're talking about, about $1,500 additional cost to us, if I did my math right. Is that what you're coming up with, Angie? Did I figure it wrong?
Not if the, not if the election workers for the six weeks prior are also subject to the change in wage.
I didn't count that in, right.
Would you come up with a guesstimate on dollar amount? Alright, so here's a question. Are you interested in tabling this until the next meeting, so we can get the additional information on an increase in costs, and allow you time to tell us where we're gonna pay for it from?
Yep, we can get all that information together and bring it to you at the next meeting.
Alright, so a motion to table.
So moved.
Motion made in second, and it's not debatable. We'll call the roll on that.
Pierce.
Hi.
Boersma.
Hi.
Grogman.
Hi.
Jensen.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you. You've got some work to do, I guess.
Yep, no problem. We'll have Kristen come the next time, too.
And if you'd like, you know, you could put together a couple scenarios for us with the election school process, superintendent's pay and the other, and if you want to look at it as a lump sum payment rather than an hourly payment, you can look at that, too, I guess. Give us some options, and we'll look at that.
Perfect, we'll get that together.
Thank you. Item B is an action to approve Resolution Number 2-...oh, we did that one, I'm sorry, that was tabled. Item C is an action to approve the Brookings Register Volga Tribune, Tri-City Star, and Elkton Record as a legal paper, Brookings County for 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made in second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item D is an action to approve the official depositories for Brookings County funds and monies for 2020 as follows. Richland State Bank, Frank Star Financial, Citizen State Bank, First Bank and Trust of Brookings, Dakota Bank, Wells Fargo, Great Western Bank, and Meta Bank. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There a second? Motion made in second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item E is an action to remove a right-of-way certificate for the BIG program, Structure 06-120-053 from the table. Is there a motion to remove it from the table?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. And all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. The action now is to approve the right-of-way certificate for the BIG program project, Structure 06-120-053. Any comments?
We did not receive the agreement back until yesterday, so I was not able to get the voluntary right-of-way agreement into the packet, but that will be looked at on the 21st. Is that correct, Stacy?
Alright, so we're approving this part of it, and we'll approve the voluntary part of it at the next meeting. That would, it's not approved, it's not in this motion anyway, so it'll be a separate agenda item. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Yeah, can I get a motion in a second? I had a motion in a second to remove it.
Right, but there was a motion on the floor.
To remove it. There was no motion on the floor.
Okay, since we didn't have a motion, then we'll look for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion made in second. Any comments? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. I thought we had a motion last time, then we motioned to table. Item F is an action to approve board assignments and department liaisons for 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
Do you want to go through the list first?
We can.
It's typically what we do, it's in your packet, it's before you. What I've done is separated it into two columns. It shows who had, who was assigned to those particular committees and boards and departments on the left, and then there's a place to fill in the blank on the, for 2020. And I don't know if we can kind of go through the list, what you typically do is go through the list, and if there's a change, you make it, otherwise, if someone wants to keep something, they note that.
Any comments?
I need to request one change. I have not been able to make the Communities of Excellence at all. Just had, it's always Wednesday morning, and it always seems to be stuff come up late for me, and my work and stuff, so I don't know if we're not doing it justice, and like I said, I've been delinquent in my responsibilities on that one, so I don't know if there's anybody else that would want to take that, and have Pierce move in to the representative. I haven't talked to you about that at all or not, but, you know, there's another meeting on Wednesday, and again, I can't go again, so.
And I think we discussed this a little bit last year, but I really think, I hate to say this, Stacy, but I think Stacy should be our representative on Communities of Excellence. And the reason for that, sorry to say that, is that this group, probably this program, is going to last eight to 10 years. It's not, it's not that it's going to be something that's going to get done this year or next year, and the whole process may outlive any one Commissioner's terms on the commission. And I think we should have somebody on there that's got some insight for the process and how it's working for the county, and it should be somebody that we would expect would still be here in 10 years, and that would be Stacy. Sorry.
There you go.
Depends on how she feels about that comment. What is the, I guess I don't know what the commitment is. It's every Wednesday?
A lot of Wednesdays in there, no, a couple Wednesdays a month. They have meetings, teleconference meetings with the trainers and stuff like that, and so, obviously, we'll have to get caught up from what's gone on this last year, but, yeah, they've, and not everybody makes it every time. There's, I mean, they have representatives from SDSU, obviously, the city, the mayor, and stuff like that, and so, I think that's a, that's a good, good point there, that Leanne brought up there, that this is a long-term process that they've been going through, and that will lead us into the future, and lead us, the community, the county, into the future. So, I think it's a good idea, that if Stacy's can do that, that would, would help out, we'd get some benefit out of it.
It's the continuity, because I did it in 18, and you did it in 19, but you don't know what they talked about in 18, I don't know what they talked about in 19, but you would be there through the whole process, hopefully.
You say a lot of these meetings are teleconferences, should you take them from our office?
No, no, you need, you need to go to the VDC offices there, out the...
Oh, VDC office, okay.
And there's, everybody gets in the same room, and they teleconference in the same room.
So, the question is, is it something you will do?
Yeah.
If appointed.
If you tell me I have to go, I'll go.
That was easy.
It would be, it can be fine, it'll be fine.
Alright, so we'll make that appointment.
And I would say, you may want to set up a time with Al Hughton there, and maybe just meet with him to get caught up. He'd probably be able to give you everything, and give you the, they've gone through, and that kind of stuff, so.
Would an alternate remain, though, in the, if there's a time where I could not make a meeting, perhaps?
If you would like to leave me as alternate, I could be alternate.
We'll put Leanne as an alternate. Any other requests for changes?
Not a change of appointment, but a change of terminology. Essential Behavioral Health and Chemical Dependency is no longer called that.
That's true.
Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness.
Behavioral Health and Wellness?
Thank you for that note. That was a good name change, too. Any other requests for any changes?
Just a couple of additions and subtractions that to note, if there aren't changes, the I-29 Interchange Overpass Committee, Brian is on that, but for commission, Larry, I added that, that was new. The Jail Expansion Committee, we, that's the full commission now, so I'm just take, going to remove that. The Mental Health Task Force, did I get that name correct, that Community Coalition at the bottom? I think Angie was on the task force and was going to stay on there. I think that's it for changes.
Is that task force meeting regularly right now?
Yes. Well, it's not the task force.
It's the coalition.
Coalition, monthly, good. Any other questions, changes, requests? Hearing none, without objection, it's approved.
Do we need a motion?
Yep. I guess we'll go with the motion.
Make a motion to approve with the changes.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. And Commission Department Directors' report.
Not too much attached to my report, is some information on an upcoming Pipeline Emergency Response Training. It's Tuesday, February 4th, at 11:30 at the Swift Health Center. That is a commission meeting day, but if you, if there are commissioners that would like to attend that, I think we could maybe try to work around that, if we know ahead of time, so.
I have a question for Bob. Is this pretty much the same training that it was last year?
Yes, ma'am.
I've attended two of them, that's pretty much the same training, so if we have any other commissioners would like to go, I'd encourage you at least one time to attend one of these meetings. It's good information.
There's a number of meetings, I mean, other dates nearby, but not here locally, per se. Something else would work better, Watertown, I think Sioux Falls. If there's interest, let me know, so. And then, I did hand out this morning the Conservation District meeting agenda. That meeting is tomorrow, January 8th, at 1:15. The agenda is in front of you, or I handed that out this morning. And then just the upcoming dates to note, on Monday is the Volga Fire Department County Feed at 5:30, SDSU, Brookings Day at the Capitol and Pier, next Wednesday, the 15th, the county holiday party, and I think you've been receiving some emails about that, on the 17th, and then Martin Luther King Day Office is closed on Monday, the 20th, and that's all I have. closed on Monday, the twentieth, and that's all I have.
All right, any questions for Stacy? Hearing none, we'll move to the State's Attorney's Report, Dan.
I will plan to give my year-end report on the twenty-first, I'll send Stacy a PowerPoint that'll try to compile all the information. Most of what I'm presenting on is in today's register, the story kind of covering the year-end report. Then I was asked by City Council to give a year-end report next Tuesday night, so I apologize that my report's going to be given to the City Council before the County Commission, but I feel like, I know you guys are signing the paychecks, but it's just the timing, the turnaround for us to get it on the agenda this week just didn't work out, so that'll kind of be the flow of things, but if you have questions between now and then, door's always open, so.
Anything else? If you don't do the report, we'll do Commissioners' reports, we'll start with Commissioner Pierce.
With the holidays since we met last week, I have nothing to report.
Commissioner Forsma.
Likewise.
Grogman.
Jensen.
And likewise. It was a quick meeting from last week to this week, nobody's going to talk about their New Year's Eve resolutions or anything else. All right, item thirteen is an executive session, and according to South Dakota five-law one-dash-two-five-dash-two, parentheses one, parentheses for personnel and contract negotiations, there's a motion moving to executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second? Have I made a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we'll move into executive session.